Meeting itself, please stand for the legislature agents.
legislature agents.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Here, Addal, here, Cortelli.
Here.
Here.
No, no. Does that work?
Uh, Heaton.
Here.
Ronnie.
Here.
Whitler.
Here.
Great. Next up is minutes of November 7th and 22. Does anybody have any objections to doing them at the same time? All right. May we have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of November 7th and November 22nd.
My second. Any discussion?
Second.
Roll call. Addal?
Yeah.
Cortelli?
Yes, yes.
You doing it, Ronnie?
Sheen.
No. Heaton?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Here.
All right, warrants payable. Um, I will move to approve warrants payable in the amount of $1,268,338 and 10 cents.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to point out that $400,000 of this is plus is flood relief and another $400,000 is related to the water into our project on Howser. Pretty high. Any further comments or questions? Okay, roll call.
Addal?
Yeah.
Cortelli?
Yes.
Heaton?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Whitler?
Here.
First, next up is mayor's comments, the flood update. I'm not quite sure how many of you that are present this evening or at some of the other meetings were. What we've been doing is working with the state Department of Emergency Services. They offered to take over debris removal for us. So when you look at debris in the river and you say, why is that still there? It's because we had to wait for evaluations and assessments and permitting and, you know, it's a procedure. But the bottom line is that the state Department of Emergency Services has offered to remove that for us, which is a real benefit to the city because it means that we don't have to come up with that matching 25% pay our part of the share. We don't have to work with individual contractors and so the state's taking care of that. We're in frequent contract tech with them to make sure that that is still going on and being pursued and they have assured us that in fact it is. So I'm not sure exactly when it's going to start, like everybody else. I hope so. But that's, after that, and then earlier somebody asked about, are we going to get another meeting? And we do, Montana Department of Transportation is planning on a public meeting and then we would like to put together a meeting from some other agencies and we're working on that and we're kind of penciling in sometime in early to mid-January and we'll keep you informed on that and so pay attention, look in wherever, Carbon Alert, social media, Carbon County News, because the MDO's public person, I can't remember what it's called, but he puts notices out about the events they're having and then we'll pitch in accordingly. Public information officer, thank you. So, and if you have any more specific questions, you might want to call and we'll do what we can to get them answered. Next up is council appreciation. We have two members that are leaving us, Pete, Cortelli, and Teresa Whitler, and I just wanted to tell them both thank you for all the work that you've done on behalf of the city. It's time much appreciated. I know you both put a lot of hard film, time and energy into the work that you've done and it's much appreciated and we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And in that vein, if you have any committees or things that you serve on, I mean, there's so many committees out there, but, or notebooks or anything that you might find helpful to council people who are going to be taking your position, this is hard with you both on the other side. Please feel free to drop them off at City Hall or send me a message so that we can make sure that all these pieces go. Thank you.
Pete gave me his government handbook, so I'll be passing that on to one of the new council members tomorrow.
Chris has that notebook as well as the Brown book, the Root's one and the Roberts' rule, so she's loaded.
She's great. Well, since I can share this one with you at the meeting.
I didn't even notice that our new council was there. Okay. Next up is the law enforcement update. We have Sergeant Wes here with us and I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you have any updates, then please share them with us. If you don't, then that's quite all right. We appreciate that you did.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, there's nothing for me. I think everybody saw the big update that was in the newspaper this past week. So really all that I have to say is our guys did a great job other than that.
Thank you.
Other than that, unless you guys have questions or anything for me.
Sergeant, I, the one comment that I have heard from people is, is who are they? And so can you, if you have an idea of the procedures, when, you know, of what the circumstances are with that, you know, I under, it's my understanding that you wouldn't release that at this point in time.
Yeah, we can't, just due to the investigation, but obviously the safety of the city is our top priority, so in that regard, that information will, will come up down the road, so we'll just kind of have to wait on that a little bit before we can release that information.
Thank you. What I understood from the article is that this investigation started in October, is that correct?
Um, I don't have the date right in front of me, but it has been
Ongoing.
A longer ongoing investigation.
It wasn't like it happened last weekend?
Yeah, no, no, we've been, we've been investigating this matter for some time and had the opportunity to take action on some things and, and our guys did really good, got some stuff off the, off the street that shouldn't be there, so.
And I guess I'd like to say it's totally unrelated, that's why I was asking that, but there was also a threat to the schools last week and so I just wanted to say thanks to the Loggia Police Department for their response to that.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a very good response and they're actually having, I know that Superintendent Fitzgerald is heading up a, kind of a look back at it
Yeah.
At the, at the event and see if there's anything that could be improved or that went well and what didn't go well.
Yep.
And that's on Thursday morning, so I'm glad that, I'm just appreciative of the response time of Loggia PD is very fast.
Course, course. We'll be having a debrief on that as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I work in that building as a substitute and anything I can contribute, I'll be more than happy to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you guys.
All right. Next up is public comment. If anybody has a public comment, please feel free to come up here, state your name, your address, keep it civil and we can't answer questions, but we are happy to answer questions if you'd like to call City Hall at a later time.
Sherri Lemer for Loggia Ria Chamber, and I'm here just to give a quick recap of Christmas Stroll. We had another incredibly successful event. In the past, we'd advertise the weekend as starting at 5:00 on Friday and Saturday. We changed a small part of the messaging in the last couple of years and now we're seeing visitors shopping not only those evenings, but they're spending much of the day, all day, Saturday, shopping and dining in our restaurant. The other comment I heard over and over is how busy during the stroll is so that many visitors have to come back on Sunday to finish their shopping. So Sunday is one of our bigger days as well. On our end from the chamber and the proud and beautiful committee, everything went very smoothly and this is because the whole town comes together to put this event on as a team. I have a thank you ad in the next Carbon County News that lists out many of the sponsors and helpers and the list is so long, not everybody could be included. With that said, I want to thank the city for all your support. Mr. Bushnell was an incredible help in closing the street and this year the Sustainability Board made a great contribution in putting out recycled containers, which cut down on all the regular garbage and that was successful as well. Why do we do this? First of all, it's a brand builder. People talk about stroll and visit all year round because of the reputation this event puts forward, but the real reason is that many stores reported record sales and many tell me this weekend carries them through the lean winter months. This event helps keep our downtown thriving and so once again, I want to thank you very much for your support. My second quick announcement is to invite you all to the next Chamber After Hours. It's this Thursday, December 15th, at the Pollard in the Hemingway Room from 5:30 to 7:00 and I hope you all can attend. It's going to be a fun evening. We'll give out awards for the best dress window contest. We'll raffle off the original stroll artwork and many other just fun, fun things that evening, so please mark your calendar.
Thank you.
Thanks Sherri.
Does anybody else who is present physically, would anybody else like to make a comment? All right, is there anybody online who would like to make a public comment? All right, last call for public comment. Okay, on to old business. Next up is ordinance 960, use of city-owned property. This is the second reading at, as a second public hearing, so may I have a motion for that? Public hearing is now open. Comments? Public comments, does anybody have any comments for this item? Here, present. Use of city-owned property. Is there any comments, public comments online? Any more public comments? Last call. All right, public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
I'm with approval, isn't it? Nice to hear.
My second.
Any discussion?
I, yeah, I, I don't know who updated it, but I'm thankful.
I did.
The amendments that I mentioned are in there and so I'm thrilled with it.
Any more questions or comments at the table? All right, roll call.
Addal?
Yes.
Cortelli?
Yes.
Heaton?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is new business, event applications and fee structures. I believe Jody wanted to speak about this a little, did you want to?
Yes. I guess we just really wanted, the admin committee, me especially, wanted council input on our application process, the application itself and the fee structure and the liability requirements. I just wanted everyone's input so we could gain some type of consensus or at least have that input so that when the resolution comes forward, that's not a complete surprise and, you know, we can move forward with that hopefully. So I guess, starting on the application itself, just so you know, I'm going to take all of the requirements, Janice and I are going to take all of the requirements that are set forth in ordinance number 960 and make sure that those are all addressed in the application itself. And we'll also probably have a summary PDF out there that people can click on that will also spell out all of those so they, they don't have to go and wade through an ordinance, you know, so it'll have all the requirements for fire, all the requirements for public work, you know, all of that type of stuff. And we'll also have the checklist right there as well, you know, so they can get the check off and say, we did this, we did this, we did this. So hopefully the goal of that is to have one application, you know, with all the pertinent information up front and then it will say, if you're applying for a street closure, please fill out this section. If you're applying for camping, please fill out this section.
If you're serving alcohol.
Yes, if you're serving alcohol, here's your catering permit, you know, that you, you'll need your alcohol serving permit, like serving and that type of thing. And then it'll also spell out in the application, if you're doing certain, you know, what we as council, however we decide this, higher risk or higher liability exposure, you will be required to carry a higher liability limit of $2 million instead of the $1 million. So I guess if I could get your input then on the app, if anyone has any feedback on that application process or is there something in there that you absolutely want in there besides, you know, what spelled out in the ordinance, please announce your chance to let us know what that would be.
So I guess the question, or, I don't know if this is possible, but I feel like it would be really helpful is if the application is one that can be fillable, like that you can just type right into it instead of handwriting into it? And that it, I mean, I'm assuming it'll be online, but it'd be great if it was something that you can type in and then submit from there.
It would be, as long as the city has the license for that Adobe product.
I guess at the very least, I guess at the very least, it's fillable where you can type it in and then like save and print it out.
It's a different, it's a license. You have to have the license for Adobe. It can just be your, yeah, W X, yeah. So I guess we can find that out, but I think that would, think that would be good.
And honestly, I would argue that there are dozens of applications, there are dozens of reasons why that software is, the city is worth paying for, for the benefit of, and the ease of use for the residents, like not just this one thing.
Right, absolutely. So I will, I will work a lot on admin awards.
Have Adobe, but I'm not sure which one.
Yeah, I just know everything's just reader, like PDF, you know.
If, if there are costs as part of that, they should be part of the fee, I think.
It's just an annual fee for Adobe, it's a licensing fee.
But some of that should be attributable to items that's being used for.
Yes, but you could use that for building permits, you could use that.
You could use it for a ton of things.
Right, but I mean, we have to pay for it somehow.
Yeah, right.
And so those costs have to come from those.
Right.
So I'm happy to have things.
Well, we'll, we'll find out. Usually pay per person. We'll figure it out on that part. So yes, I've got that, so fillable form.
Yeah, and I, and also somewhere on the application, even though, you know, like you said, most people don't want to pour through this ordinance, but if it is linked on there, so that people, if they want to just click and look at it, then
Okay.
You know, then it's, then Ronnie's not getting the questions of like, now where's the ordinance? It's all just right there.
Okay.
For the fee structures, have you guys talked about fees at all? About what, you know, what you guys are thinking about, you know, keeping it the same, increasing?
I, I did talk to Courtney today more about the park usage type of thing and we, this is kind of an aside, but she would like the ability to have more of a short form application for a use of the park if it's just a quick, you know, birthday party for a child or someone wants to put on a Zumba class at the gazebo, you know, that type of thing. And so I, we did talk about that type of thing, you know, is it, a lot of times it's just $10 an hour or is it, you know, if you want it for the whole afternoon, $10, for the whole day, $50 or $100 type of thing. So I don't know necessarily, I guess Courtney and I need to find out if that's something that can just be set within the park department or if it will have to be passed by resolution for that fee structure.
Okay.
And, you know, we'll have to find that out.
The idea is that if somebody wants to have a birthday party for six people, $35 is fine, you know, $200 is not.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
And I know that we've talked about before, the online calendar or something that So if Pete wants to have a sort of celebration of the, at the gazebo, he can look online and say, is May 10th available?
Right.
To even, you know, before you even go down any sort of application filling out.
We also talked about listing in either a spreadsheet form or on the website itself, each park and then whether or not it's observable or not.
What about the TV?
Yeah, what, yeah, and then you could go and you could click on that park and look at the calendar for that park.
That'd be cool.
So you would be able to tell if it's available or not.
Do you know when the, those items will be available to suit for you?
It, after, in January probably. Will that be soon enough?
I want.
By our January.
Soon enough when it's done, but I'm just, for scheduling purposes, because we're starting to get applications, so are you thinking like, are we penciling it in? Do you think for discussion or for, I mean?
Discussion for the first meeting. In January.
Are you thinking you'll have it addressed?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Jen, Jen, are you good with that?
Yeah. Now that my other commitment is resolved, I have more time for that.
So if anybody has any more suggestions for that committee, please mail them to Pete.
Yes, and, and we did talk a little bit about on the fee structure. Right now, we do give nonprofits the opportunity to do like-kind services. A lot of other places just charge 50% of the fee that's there, so I guess I wanted your feedback. Are we able, have we been able to track those like-kind services for those nonprofits enough to justify waiving that fee or do we want to just go do a straight 50% of the normal fee? So I guess I kind of wanted people's feedback on that when we're moving forward with it.
I guess, I think a clarifying question before that is, when people pay the fee, it's not, like, so they write a check for the $100 or in this case, it would be $50 for a nonprofit, that check's not cashed correctly, correct, or right, right away, correct?
Yep, once it's approved, once it's approved, then we deposit it. We don't cash the deposit until afterwards and if there's an issue.
That $500.
$500 should get back. But the, the $100 fee
Does get.
Does get deposited once the, the application is approved. We don't do it until the application is approved.
Okay. And then, sorry, the fee, and then the deposit is the one that obviously is not, not cashed held until after the event.
And then, and then should it or does it matter if the nonprofit is holding an grant that is not a moneymaker? It's just an event?
I would back up and just say, I think to date, the, there are only two entities that do in-kind instead of paying the fee to date and, and I believe, at least for one of them, the city has an MOU
Okay.
In place.
My, Farmer's Market?
Yeah.
The Farmer's Market and what else?
What's the other?
Just the Carbon County Art Guild.
I think the Art Guild. That art was the name of?
No, the, the.
Oh, for the, the Art Fair too.
Yeah, the Labor Day Art Fair.
Does it have an MOU?
Well, I, I know the Farmer's Market has had an MOU in the past. I, I don't know about the Art Guild, but I would just say, I don't think that this is, for our community to date, the idea of, of a nonprofit providing in-kind services instead of just paying is a rare instance.
I'm not against it being, both of them on their, you know, with criteria.
Okay.
Because they, historically, I think on the application, they have to write out why they're asking, what their in-kind service is and that should determine to me, what that fee was going to be 50, I don't know what that criteria would be because I haven't looked at it.
And I do think something that, you know, since we're moving forward with the idea of you mayor with the department head is kind of, you know, sign off, I would think that's the question really for you, is like what, for the, for nonprofit participation or, or usage, what do you want to see in place to, you know, either demonstrate that in-kind donation, in-kind services have been provided or do you want payment and what without?
And if they have an MOU, they are providing in-kind services because that's spelled out in the MOU.
Correct.
And if they're not using anything different than what's already in the MOU, that space or feature or whatever it is, then they wouldn't even need the application. But yeah, for the ones that fall through the cracks, I guess that would have to be determined.
I mean, I guess I would say that too, that if they don't have an MOU and it's, I don't see anything wrong with being 50% of the fee
Yeah.
Because there is processing that needs to happen
Yep.
And it does take staff time and, I mean, just because they're nonprofit doesn't mean that, I mean, there's, it's still
Yeah.
Time is money.
Yep, okay.
And it's still a use of a city-owned property that I think, you know, and I, I think it takes more time too for the city staff to then follow up, did they do the?
Yeah, I guess that was kind of my point of pointing out that there's only two right now, is like, I, I feel like in most cases, even nonprofits, if they want the space, they pay for it and they do their thing and then we're all fine and there's a couple of instances where that doesn't fit well with what our community needs are and we've worked out the MOUs for those, but.
Okay.
I think it's fine to be 50%.
50%, okay. Okay. Yeah, and then as far as the other fees, we have not specifically talked numbers. We have talked generally, like if estimating, you know, do you charge a certain amount for a street closure because you're going to have a lot more work, a lot more staff time? Do you base other events on the same thing, based on the number of participants, estimated participants that they're going to have? If you're going to have a, a concert in the park and you expect 500 people to be there, you know, do you, that type of thing, do we want to base it on the estimated number of participants or do we want to just keep it simple? If it's a street closure, you, you may pay a little more because of the, the staff time involved and stuff.
And the barriers that, I know the police department have talked about how wanting to have those, I don't want to forget, that just came into my mind when you said, street closures and a little bit more for street closures, maybe that if we did increase that or have that cost a little bit higher, it would help to pay for those, kind of what Captain Coke was talking about, those barriers that we base, the city would probably need to justify, that are, they can be filled up with water or sand or.
In the past, they've always produced them themselves. We don't have those, we don't produce them, they get them from, rent them or do whatever. They, those bigger barriers, they, the venue is the one who purchasing or rents or does that, we do not supply those. We supply the street closing year, when the road closes, the barricades for like the parade or stuff, but as far as those street closures, when they require a bigger barrier, the venue has to pay for those. We don't have those available.
Yeah, that's what I was saying though, is if we did pay, we did charge more, then we could have money to then pay and buy our own.
Or, or you could, if we do have them, we could rent them
Correct.
To the event organizer.
If they didn't have one, correct, which is another
Right. So, and, and that's just it, some of the events provide so much of their own things to make the event happen, including their security, their, you know, the, the enclosure, you know, I'm thinking like a street dance.
Yeah.
You know, all of that type of stuff where, you know, then we have ones where the city provides a lot, so it's, it's kind of, you know, you don't want to overcharge someone who's doing everything themselves
Yeah.
Versus someone who's like, oh, help, I need, you know, I need the city's help on all of this. So how, how do you, how do you determine that?
Wouldn't it be clarified through the application?
Yeah.
Yeah, and just.
Just way we want it.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm saying, I need, I'd like some input and guidance from anybody else who would like to see in that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it could be like specifically for the street closure, a certain flat fee and then if you need to.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if we want to offer if you need to rent this if we're not going to buy it.
Well, that's more work for.
I feel like we're getting pretty popular.
They never really do.
In my mind, it seems like it's an application fee, so
Okay.
So the application, you know, maybe we do attendees, expected attendees, some tiered rate there and then when, when they fill out, you know, because the check, one of, some of the sample checklist we've looked at have said, the department says, we expect that this event will need X amount of our resources costing X amount of dollars and then, so I would say if the checklist have that, then, you know, those dollars can be added
What if?
As a cost for the event on top of, you know what I mean? Like the fee.
If you, if you do that, are we in danger of them underestimating because they know the fee's going to be higher, if they say it's going to be 500 to 1,000 versus 0 to 500?
Okay, but you have to assume good intent, you have to assume that people are going to.
Or they don't know, you know, so you, you, you wouldn't always know. There's so many different conditions.
Personally, my preference would be to have a certain amount for each type of event, a certain amount for a street closure, a certain amount for
With alcohol.
Yeah, a certain amount, just because as an event organizer, I would want to know upfront what that cost is going to be, I don't want to come back later and find out, oh, by the way, you owe an extra $500, you know, I don't think
Yeah, okay.
That makes sense.
Could we, um, open this up at a committee meeting next Tuesday because then we can, or next time there's a meeting and then we can have a more definite thing for.
Yeah, and, and just send emails to Jen and I
Yeah.
On, on your ideas for, you know, I just wanted input on.
This is mostly just like, start of a conversation and if you have anything that's like burning in your brain or.
This is mostly just like start of a conversation and if you have anything that's like burning in your brain or you're like, I need the application to address this issue, we want to know that before we move forward.
No, and I appreciate this time, you know, this is for us to discuss.
And then the only other thing was, you know, on the liability, you know, obviously alcohol, we've always required two million. With the street closure, that was one that we were thinking would probably require the two million because of the higher risk with things that have happened in other areas. And then anytime you have a apparatus such as a bouncy house or something like that, a lot of cities don't allow those. So, we could do the same or we could just say you need two million dollars for the coverage if you're going to have those type of events included.
I personally like bouncy houses.
You mean the ones that incidents where they blow off in the.
Yeah, that too, I know. And then also camping was also, if an event is going to have camping, to what people spending staying overnight and stuff like that. That would also require the two million. Let me know if there's some other things that, out there that you still should have a higher limit? Or if you don't agree with any of those, let me know as well. And we will have a rough draft of the fees in, for the next city council, your meeting with the, yeah, in January. So, it, it'll be up for discussion then.
So, is camping going to be handled through the camping ordinance or through?
No, this would be for a special event like Jennifer Drinkwater did her race and she had overnight camping as part of her event. If someone like with the rent up at the fairgrounds wants, you know, access to that for camping for their event, then it would also be covered under that. Unless you want to cover those some other way. We're thinking of an event that includes the camping.
Mayor, I think you're asking about an ordinance for camping.
I just don't want them to, yeah, be in disagreement.
Well, because planning board wanted to, to open the for, a forum to discuss the camping and then look at the growth policy and all of that, and then, and then make some recommendations in an ordinance for camping. So, I didn't want to step on toes.
I would think they're two different things because one's part of an event and would be subject to its own guidelines versus, you know, allowing someone to come into town to camp.
Right.
Just keep in mind.
Okay, right, okay.
And, and keep in mind any problems that might conflict with a future conversation so that we can not conflict with the event. I, yeah.
Because there's, there's several cases where an event has come to town that they've done camping, not just, you know, the, the Verge Rally. There was the camping that Jennifer did with her, and then we've had camping at the Civic Center.
And I would say, the line of order saying that we can't do that, we need to have something in our, yeah, application fee. Right, because the ordinance doesn't really help with the campaign.
All right, any more questions or comments? All right, standing committees, administration and finance.
I don't know. Sharing that, okay. All right, well, mainly what we talked about, we just talked about. So, Lonnie did present her research on TechMyGov and she did look at a couple other platforms and she found that TechMyGov probably fits the city's needs for the most reasonable amount of money. So, they will most likely be moving forward with that platform.
Based on her report, it's hands down the best choice.
Yeah, cool, absolutely. And so, that was about all we talked about.
We continued the discussion on the city manager. And we, we decided that it would be in the best interest to begin to educate everyone, including ourselves, beginning in the first part of the year. Because this will take a few years and it's a very important decision.
It will be a standing agenda item moving forward for admin. And we did discuss also a couple other things that we'll be putting on the agenda in twenty twenty-three, so.
They change.
And thanks from admin.
Thank you. Public Works.
Okay, that's us again.
Jim?
Jim was up on the show, but.
I wasn't able to make the meeting today and we, and I know one of the things we worked on, the due diligence about the public recycling center and I've been in contact with the commodity that transfers the cardboard, the plastics and stuff. I did get a visit with him, the other fellow, we've been playing phone tag. But like I said, one of the things that come to mind is the fact of the recycling, the cardboard, the plastics are a commodity deal and they're up and down, like I said, the, the cardboard has dropped ninety-five percent in the last three months. So, we pay, the last three times they picked up, we pay to have it hauled away. We know there's no income and right now, like you said, the only place they can even take cardboard to right now, today, and that is Texas. And so, it's, uh, the recycling is a very vulnerable, vulnerable deal about, because like plastics, he said, they're right now about six percent of plastics actually get recycled. We pay to haul it off to get recycled and they pay to haul it off to get buried. It's not a cut and dry deal that everything we're recycling is getting recycled. I mean, people need to look into this because that's what, the way the country and the world is right now, a lot of recyclables aren't being recycled and we're paying, we pay to help our trash haul it off in the first place, now we're going to pay to have it hauled off after you take it down to have it recycled now. He doesn't expect that cardboard to stay that way, it'll probably come back up and it'll take quite a bit of time. But like I said, they do the hauling of our plastics and our glass and our cardboard. Scott, I can't remember what his name is, I'm giving, we've been playing phone tag and Meg got his intake on whether they're interested in what they do in buildings. They kind of have a deal where they actually do put out containers, pick it up and they do sort of recycling. Whether it would work in our community, if he was interested, we, I haven't found that out, but that's what we're working on is getting some cut and dried numbers of taking it over. And, and in my aspect, what I thought, there's no way we could run it on a part-time basis. The city takes it over, my thought, and I visited with Lonnie about, we'd need at least one full-time person. And if the grant did come in, that'd be a sixty thousand dollar a year position. But we'd have to have a full-time person to actually run that. Because if it's under my deal, I want someone who's, I can put in charge, just like my streets department or my water or my sewer guy. I need someone in charge of the recycling that can run the deal and, and so I think that, if we're looking that direction, that's the way we have to look at funding it, we're going to have to have one full-time person. And I just think that's the way we need to go. But I said, there's a lot of variables in this, which I'm finding out, it's not a cut and dry deal. It's, it's a very vulnerable commodity that goes up and down. But like I said, glasses and plastics right now are getting up. We pay to have them hauled away. And the cardboard today, and he gave me a three-year deal of what they've done over the last three years and we, we pay for the cardboard too. Once in a while, you'll get a little check back, a hundred, two hundred dollars here and there, but by the time you're done in a year's process, you're paying to have your garbage hauled away in another aspect than what we do today. I think we really need to look into it. I think it needs to go out. The other deal is, I, I get a lot of people talking and I think the public needs to know about this. I don't think the majority of the public knows what we're doing. I think we as a, as a city should put, put it in the paper so we're looking at this ordinance and we're looking to take the recycling and here's what it's going to do and here's what it costs and, and, because I said, I don't think you should be able to take and add to people's taxes a certain amount of dollars without their knowledge of what you're actually doing. We can't add to their water and sewer bill without going to them. I don't think you can add to their garbage bill without letting them have a chance to know what's going on.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. We discussed this morning that this is not a hot button issue. Eighty-five percent of the people want recycling, but there's so many tentacles, there's so many offshoots. Terry's done a great job in assembling facts. Gina has been more than helpful in providing everything we've asked for. But this is not going to be a quick fix. But we've all agreed that people want to recycle, we just want to make sure that we don't get in over our head and that we're prepared to do it properly.
Jim, who was it you talked to? Was it Scott at Earth First?
No, Scott's the one I've been playing phone tag at Earth First. He's the one we've been playing phone tag. I've been trying to contact him on what they do in billing and see if that would work up here. The company that actually picks up and holds cardboard and plastics.
Centennial?
What's that?
Is it Centennial?
Yeah. And they're, they're a broker, they're a broker, they're not a, there is no, like you said, there is no contract. We don't have a contract with them. They're a broker and they will come pick it up and take it and by the way and stuff and then they, it works out in the end. They're, but they don't need, they don't do a contract, that's what they do. They go out and they do it all over the country, they pick up recyclables and then it's a, like I said, they haul it down or they get for it, if you get some or you pay for it, depending on what the trucking is. But they don't do a contract, they're just, they're a broker on recycling.
Any more questions for Jim?
I, I just have one correspondence actually regarding Public Works that I got today as, as a phone call. So, this actually relates to all the standing committees, but in particular, we have a resident who was interested in knowing if recycling was on the Public Works agenda for this week and can't find the agendas for the standing committees. And when I went to look, it, it wasn't, normally I thought they were with the agenda for this meeting, but they, it wasn't for this.
Yeah, it wasn't in the email that Lonnie sent out, but I don't know if it was.
To us. But it wasn't in, like, this public can't access that. And so, I was wondering if anybody else has gotten feedback that way, if that was the, anyway, I, I think it would be great for, for the community to be able to see the agendas for the standing committees in the future.
Yeah, actually, I got, I got a note from Trent Moore and he saw that my aggregation was on the agenda, so, so. He must have seen it. So, with Terry being gone, there was one agenda that I didn't, I only got three.
Yeah, because, because Public Health and Safety, we didn't meet.
Yeah, I, I sent you the agenda for Public Works and you had it included in our email.
In the email, us, but I'm.
Right, but it goes to Denise, she's on the upload and she usually always gets them in there, so.
Well, the others were.
So, I think it was just a quirk, not a regular person action, but I wanted to point that out that somebody.
Are they also uploading the minutes to our standing committee meetings? Are they available to the public as well?
I believe they're available for review, but they're not living on the internet. They're available, anybody can come in, but they're so rough that, they're not an item that was used for reference on the internet, so. They're, they are available though in the.
So, just to be clear in the future, if I get, with the exception of this one week regarding Public Works, in general, standing committee meeting agendas are put out to the public in the same place that the, like, the city council agenda is. You click on, on the council agenda and it'll be after this agenda, it'll be the other one. Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure because like.
Good point. Thank you. Can I ask, would it be possible to at least email other council people the minutes for all the other standing committee meetings so that we're up to date on what the other committees are doing too? Besides our update here? Or is that, or do we just come in?
As long as it's a whole group, we're fine, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, no, I'm just thinking like, but the standard, right, yeah, no, just like our agendas turn out, it'd be nice to have those.
The minutes here?
The minutes as well.
I'll get along on that. All right, there was no Public Health and Safety meeting. Do any people on that committee want to?
That would be me.
You want to?
No, there was no meeting. Because Teresa was not able to attend and neither was Terry, so I figured I wouldn't meet by myself.
Plans, we said plans. Who would like to speak up?
Oh, we decided that Jen would update because the, the big item was STR.
The only item.
Committee updating.
I took the whole hour, y'all. We had lots of questions. Yeah, so the, the short-term rental advisory committee has been meeting for multiple months and had their last meeting last Thursday on the eve of December and then it's been dissolved. Results from that, from that, basically, we met every week with the exception of Thanksgiving for at minimum of two hours a week. And out of that work came nine recommendations for the planning board and the land use and planning committee to consider, five of which were approved unanimously, which I feel like is something the community and everyone involved in this ongoing conversation should be pretty proud of. There are a lot of, a lot of viewpoints to consider, a lot of folks with vested interests in the outcome of these recommendations. Next step, these two committees will review the nine recommendations in their meetings between now and the twenty-second of February. And then, and both of those meetings will provide opportunities for more public input. So, the advisory committee did put out a survey of which we got nine, over nine hundred respondents. And the committees, the committee meetings had folks in chambers offering public comment at each meeting, online public comment each meeting, and we had plenty of correspondence that was included. So, lots of, lots of involvement from the community and these two committees, sorry, the land use and planning committee and the planning board will offer more opportunities for public involvement. And I would encourage folks to keep showing up and participating in that conversation because I feel, and I, I think I speak for the whole committee, I feel like that robust participation made for better recommendations overall. And so, at, on the twenty-second, the council meeting on the twenty-second, both committees will bring their proposals to city council for presentations, I guess, is what I would say. I would expect that, you know, there are nine recommendations, they're pretty diverse. So, the, the council should expect that not all of that ground will be covered with one resolution or one ordinance or one zoning document. It'll be, it'll still be multiple discussions, but, yeah, I just want to, on behalf of the committee, thank the public for participating in the survey, for coming to the meetings and for submitting public comments. And I have really appreciated participating in this process. All documents that the committee either brought forth themselves or that residents provided for us to consider, along with all of our agendas, all of our minutes and all of our public comment are on the STR webpage. And the final minutes from December eighth are in the process of being, are being voted approved by the committee via email. And once those are done, the last minutes outline every single one of these nine recommendations in detail and they will be available for everyone who has that.
Thank you. Jen, can you remind us, because I asked you at the committee meeting today, who the members of the committee are?
Oh, yes, thank you.
I think that's good to.
Yeah, so, I was the representative from council. We had Jen Kat who runs AAA, she's a local property manager. We had Carrie Wilson, who works at the library, has a child in school, used to have a business, has a property here. We had, okay, you're going to help me, Roy Peterson.
Roy Peterson.
Peterson, resident. We also have Jacob. Jacob Pope, who was our chair. We had Julie Ray Burke and we had.
Jordan McPally.
Polly Richter, who is our representative from planning board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just wanted to add again, we said it today, you know, we all really appreciate the dedication and the tremendous lift that this committee has provided in these recommendations. And what they've done in the eight or nine weeks that they met has not been, I mean, it would take eight months if it was done through the, the foundation, you know, workforce housing committee or other committees. So, it was, it was an engaged and, and very dedicated group and we appreciate that.
Yeah, huge effort, yeah, so thank you to that committee.
Any more questions for Jim?
All right. Of course, oh, I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
The committee agendas are, they're all on there, Public Works is on there.
Okay.
All three of them.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Maybe with the Public Health and Safety that they were, because that was missing because it wasn't.
Yeah, maybe that.
Maybe that, oh, maybe they got it mixed up.
Yeah, but no, they were on it. Thank you.
And does, does that include the minutes?
No.
No, just the agenda.
Just the agenda, yeah.
Next up is correspondence.
Next up is correspondence, if there was any, it's in your packet. Um, and with that, I, can I, yeah, I would just wanted to, I don't know if any other council members wanna say anything, but I really appreciated serving with Teresa Whistler and with Pete Petelli. Um, Pete's been a really great source of, um, historical knowledge, so there's a lot of times that I've, um, connected with Pete and said like, and said, I'm sure that this has come up before, what happened previously? And so it's always good to have someone like that on the council, so I very much appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
So, thank you for serving. And Teresa, you've been, um, a joy to work with, I've been working, I've worked with you on several things and, and several committees and on all different types of ordinances, I'm pretty sad we're losing like our big ordinance guru. So it's kind of, it's kind of being a bit scary, but I guess we'll all have to learn a little bit more now, um, but thank you, Teresa, so much for everything you've done.
I would mimic those sentiments and say to, like, as someone who, this is my first year on council, having both of you here to, as mentors, in my mind, that's what it felt like, um, has been invaluable, and thank you so much. Thank you both.
All right, there's only one thing left.
I moved to a jerk.
All right.
Need a jerk.
Thank y'all for coming.